I had to do a lot of ironing and sanding for the fall. So yeah, I've been trying to finish some of this all summer.
Good evening, everybody. We're going to begin our meeting shortly. I just want to, same as I did for the last meeting, for the board members, just to let you know and remind you, the microphones are turned off. When you are ready to speak, please turn them on. That helps a lot with the feedback that we have in this room sometimes. We are going to begin, we're going to begin our meeting shortly and start for the webinar, for anybody attending or attending remotely. Mr. Abumia, if you like, you can start the webinar now. And just let me know when you see a few people logging in so we know they're accommodated and then we can start the meeting. Thank you, everybody. Mr. Kuzmarsky, when you're ready, you may begin.
All right. Thank you very much. Please note, this meeting of the Mala Board of Education is open to the members of the public to be physically present. Members of the public that attend will be asked to follow the same procedures as all other visitors to our schools. Those procedures can be found on the Agenda page of our website. Initially, the board meeting will be livestream for viewing purposes only. Anyone wishing to view the meeting may do so via Zoom. The webinar ID for this meeting is 869-9811-7945, and the required password is 253571. Special note, this meeting of the Mala Board of Education will be open to the public and begin at 6:30 for a special presentation of the board by Mr. Matt Lee, Field Service Representative from the New Jersey School Board Associations. A regular meeting of the board will begin at 7:00 PM or shortly thereafter. Please roll call Mr. Lee.
Dr. Moretti. Dr. Park.
Here.
Ms. Cohen.
Here.
Mr. Copeland.
Here.
Mr. De Silva.
Here.
Mr. Denise.
Here.
Mr. Gallo.
Here.
Ms. Conoco.
Here.
Mr. Kuzmarsky.
Here. Out of good notice of agenda, this meeting is provided with the Ridgewood News and the Record specifying that the Mala Board of Education will meet on September 1st, 2021 in the administrative offices, 60 Ridge Road, Mala, New Jersey. A copy was filed with the township clerk. Please rise for a salute to the flag. Dr. Park, will you lead us through?
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like a motion to go out of order on the agenda for the purposes of Matt Lee's presentation. Mr. Copeland, second in line, Mr. De Silva. All in favor? All right.
I would just like to give a minute to introduce Mr. Matt Lee. He has worked with our board over the last couple of years. Specifically, the first engagement we had with Mr. Lee is when we worked on a strategic plan. We got a chance to really understand the scope of the supports that the New Jersey School Boards has to offer. We were able to invite him to our board retreat where he was able to work with us along lines of just functioning as a board as a whole. And this is yet another opportunity for him to come and educate us on just proper functioning as a group, evaluation, and other things that the board is able to oversee. So, Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Dr. De Turo. Kyle, if you wouldn't mind starting the presentation. And while that's happening, I'd just like to say good evening to my friends here at the Mala Board of Ed. I'm glad to be back in front of you today, talking to you about some of the things that we talked about at our retreat, and taking it the next step, and talking about how we integrate the evaluation of the superintendent into our governance cycle. Some of you may recall from when we did our goal-setting presentation that this process of governance happens in a cycle that starts with goal-setting and moves through frequent reporting, and then turns itself into an evaluation exercise of the board and the superintendent, and then we begin the process all over again. So now that we've had our discussion about goals, and we are finalizing those and setting up the schedule for reporting out, we're going to talk about what the next step in that process is. Now, this won't happen until next spring, but it's important that you all know how this fits into the cycle, and you all know the steps that need to be taken, and the timeline that needs to be put into place so that we do this in a timely manner. So I am going to start off with a quick slide on the agenda for tonight. We're going to talk about legally what your responsibilities are as a board of education when it comes to evaluating your superintendent. We're going to talk about the process itself. We're going to talk about the tool we provide as the association that supports school board members in their work. And just a quick reminder, and you know, this is something that we frequently have to talk about because these circumstances do change, but if you do have a relative who works in the district, you may be conflicted in taking part in the superintendent evaluation. So if you do have a question about any relationship that you have with an employee in the district, please take that up with your board attorney. So why do we evaluate our superintendent? Well, clearly accountability is the main principle in volunteer. You, as a board of education, have given the responsibility for running the district on a day-to-day basis to your superintendent. And as the oversight body for the district, it's important that you hold that superintendent to certain standards of performance and behavior, really. So the evaluation process is meant to help you evaluate the superintendent on those standards. When we look at the legal guidelines, we can start on the left side of this slide, and those are the things that are outlined in statute. You know, NJSA 18A is the education statute. And this statute specifies that the board needs to evaluate the performance of the superintendent at least once a year, that it needs to be in writing. The board and the superintendent need to meet to discuss findings, and sometimes boards think that this can be delegated to board officers or to a personnel committee, but it's really meant to happen with the entire board. And then finally, the evaluation needs to be based on goals and objectives, and we'll talk a lot more about that as we go forward, and other responsibility and criteria prescribed by the state. On the right side of this slide, we look at the code, and this is also going to fit into some of the important principles we talked about tonight. First, and probably the one that's most, that drives a lot of this process, is the deadline that it has to happen by. It must be done by July 1st, okay? And there are ramifications for not doing that. We'll talk about that next. But some of the other things that's in the code piece are defining some of the areas that we need to evaluate against, like areas of strength, areas needing improvement, other recommendations for professional growth, and indicators of student progress. It also says that a summary conference meeting shall include a majority of the total board membership. So when I talked before about the board and the superintendent must meet, that's where it manifests itself in code. So I talked about the fact that July 1st is a hard deadline for this, and what are the ramifications of not doing that? Well, it will be reflected in your CUSAC score. So if you look at these governance indicators, you all know that CUSAC has five main areas, one of them being governance. These two indicators that you see, 2A and B, talk about the fact that the board should have a policy and a contracted CSA to evaluate him or her based on the board goals and other performance measurements. And each member, new member, has to be trained on the CSA evaluation, which we're doing here tonight. And then B is that this needs to be done by July 1st. And you can see that the points attached to each of these on CUSAC are 7 and 6 respectively, and no one wants to lose 13 points on CUSAC just for not meeting this obligation. So that's why it's important to pay attention to that deadline and plan around it. It's a recommendation of the NJSBA that the board develop an evaluation calendar. Everybody knows that toward the end of the year, when this is actually due, you're going to see a lot of activity revolving around performances and graduations and things of that nature. So it's important that the board sort of scope out how long it's going to take to go through each of these steps, and when they need to be done by. And if there are questions on this, or I can help you with the planning, please let me know. So this is really the framework of the process right here, this flow chart. And we start, as we said at the beginning, with our district goal planning, of student goal setting, and the action plans that are created by the administration to help actualize the goals that you've set for the district. And we talked also at the beginning about how there should be progress updates along the way that make sense from the perspective of the nature of the goal. We often recommend doing something on a quarterly basis, but depending on the goal, that might not make as much sense. So it should be done in accordance with what it is you're trying to accomplish. The next piece is where we start the actual evaluation process, and that is a superintendent evaluation pre-conference. This was a step that was built into the process a few years back when we revised this process in partnership with the New Jersey Association of School Administrators. This is very much in lockstep with how educators are evaluated. So if a principal is going to review the performance of a teacher, often they will meet beforehand, talk about what it is they're going to be evaluated against, and then follow through with the actual evaluation. Well, this is very much the same thing. We're going to expect at a conference like this that the board has sort of a final review of the progress of district goals, and talk about some of the kinds of evidence that may be provided to support the superintendent's self-rating, and also some of the evidence that the superintendent will provide to document his or her performance against the standards, which are the second part of the evaluation. So that is a full board meeting, and it should happen before the superintendent goes in to begin his piece of the evaluation document. The next step, you see the superintendent completes his or her self-assessment. And with that, the superintendent's going to provide evidence that the district goals, the progress on the district goals, and also evidence for the six leadership standards that we're going to talk about a little bit later in the presentation. Once that is done, the superintendent, if you're using our tool, and it's not mandated that you use our tool, but we do think that it's the best tool there is because we developed in cooperation with the Administrators Association, and it helps you to address each of the pieces required by statute and code. Now, if you are using our tool, once the superintendent is finished and clicks "Complete", a 48-hour period starts. It's kind of an oops period. So the superintendent will have the ability at that point to go back in, change anything he may want to tweak, add any additional information that may be needed, and this is transparent to the board. You'll not see any of this, but I do see this as the person responsible for County. Once that 48-hour period is done, the superintendent is locked out, and the board gets an automatic message that says the superintendent is done, and it's time for you, as board members, to go in and do your part of the evaluation. Now, again, this is all sort of driven by the calendar and the timeline that we develop, but you're going to give the board a certain amount of time to finish with this, in recognition that you're going to have at least two more meetings with the superintendent to complete this process. So Mr. Kuzmarsky, as the board president, will likely guide you in keeping to that timeline so that the board doesn't run out of time at the end. Once the board jumps into the evaluation tool, their job is to go in and to comment on the superintendent's self-assessment, and to also grade the superintendent from their own perspective. And once that is done, Mr. Kuzmarsky, as the board president, would reach out to me, and I would go into the back end of the system and develop what's known as a compilation report. Compilation report takes everyone's input and puts it into a single document. Now, this is not the evaluation. This is a, just a collection of everyone's opinions, and from that, the board has discussion to develop a majority opinion document. That's the summary document, and that is the final evaluation document for the superintendent. It's important to note that while board members may put any comments they want in their individual input into this, the majority opinion document, the summary document, will reflect only the majority's opinion, okay? Superintendents do not report to individual board members, they report to a body. So it's important that the board get together and create this majority opinion document, okay? Once that is done, the board president typically will write up the summary document and set up a meeting with the superintendent to review that summary document as required by code, and then send an advanced copy to the superintendent, usually a couple days in advance, so that everybody's on the same page about what we're going to discuss at the summary meeting. Once you guys have that discussion about the document, the board president and the superintendent both sign the document, a copy is kept locally here, and potentially you'll send a copy to your attorney if the board so chooses to, but that's it. It doesn't go anywhere else, it doesn't come back to us, it doesn't go to the state or anything like that. It's a personal personnel document that stays here within the district. Any questions on the process? Pretty clear? Okay. So we talked about the evaluation pre-conference already. Important to note that if you're going to have a discussion on progress updates on goals, and it's aside from performance discussions about the superintendent, that's typically a public session meeting. If you're going to have one that touches upon evaluative conversations about the superintendent's performance on goals, that is an executive session meeting. Important to make that distinction. So this is just a page that talks about some of the kinds of evidence that you might want to provide. So obviously, progress updates on district goals, any student performance data, any other standards that have been assessed and examined by the board, and these are some of the areas where you might find some of that stuff. We also talk about the fact that board members along the course of the year may want to put aside evidence into their own folders in anticipation of filling out this performance document at the end of the year. So this is what a district goals assessment typically looks like. You will see a description of the goal, and that is something that is entered by the superintendent. And then you'll see at the top here that he or she will rate themselves along this scale, and again, the scale was developed jointly between us and the ASA. And then he or she will insert comments in here, and typically a link. And the link would be to a drive that only the board members have access to, and that's where the superintendent can provide, you know, a wealth of evidence, and board members can just link out to that to review that evidence. Like we just simply don't have enough room across the entire state to hold all of that evidence. And then you can see here that, very similar to what the superintendent does, the board members have opportunity to comment here and also create a ranking here, and that is what a typical goal assessment looks like. Here's what a compilation might look like. So we have a sample goal here about future rated schools, and then we have the superintendent's comments, what it is that he or she did to help meet that goal. And then down here, we have members' comments, okay? Now, here, we can see the ratings are sort of put together into a chart, if you will, and the superintendent rated this as a satisfactory progress made, one of the board members rated as an achieved goal, seven of them rated as satisfactory progress made, little or no progress made by one board member. So as we talked about before, this is a majority document. So based on this, the rating on this would be satisfactory progress made, all right? Next, we're going to talk about the standards, and this is essentially part two of the evaluation tool. These standards came from the professional standards for educational leaders, and they used to be known as EASILIC standards, and they basically reflect qualities in educational leadership. Now, we've chosen six, again, in conjunction with ASA, because they're most reflective of a superintendent's duties. I think there are 10, but some of them are sort of building level appropriate. So these are what the standards look like. They're, I will read them all, but you can see that they reflect quite a broad spectrum of areas in which the superintendent can contribute to the growth of the district. And each of those has their own rating system. So if you look at this one, which happens to be standard one, mission vision and core values, the rating grid looks like this. You have the standard name at the top, and then a description of the standard here. Then you have a rating scale, and this scale does change for each standard. Then you have some of the resources you may want to consider. Once again, room for evidence links supplied by the superintendent. And then you have indicators for each of the standards. So each of the standards is broken down into basically component parts, and you can rate each of the indicators separately. So you can see here, indicator one has exemplary rating, indicator two, a professional rating. But then down at the bottom here, you can see that there is a overall rating area. Now, you won't be compelled to do this, but of course, you'd be expected to do something that correlates with your ratings on the indicators. So if you, sorry, if you did exemplary on all the ones up here, and then came down here and wrote unsatisfactory, that wouldn't make any sense, all right? So you're looking for consistency in your ratings in this area. And then finally, at the bottom, you can see there's room for board member comments. And this is what a compilation for a standard might look like. Once again, you can see that there's an array of ratings from the board members here, but there is clearly consensus here that the rating here is proficient from five of the eight board members. And also on this compilation, board member comments would also appear on the page, we just didn't have the room on the slide. So just to be clear about some of the terms we talked about already, there's a compilation document, which is just everyone's opinions aggregated, and this should be considered a data source to help you move to majority opinion. Once you get to majority opinion, that gets documented into what becomes the annual performance report. And then finally, the annual performance report reflects a majority of opinion on performance on goals, standards, and focus areas. I think this process is clear now, but just to make a couple of sort of variations that you may work with, when the full board does meet to discuss the compilation document, you can start out two ways. You could start out with just a bare compilation report and have your conversations as a board, or the board president can take a shot at drafting the final summary document and bring that to the initial meeting. It all depends on how you guys want to handle it. So yeah, it's up to you and a discussion that you guys should have prior to the process beginning. Final piece on this slide is the piece at the bottom where we talk about discussing annual summary conference. Important thing to remember about this is a written document will only reflect majority opinion, as we've already said. However, board members can use the annual summary conference to talk about any minority opinion that they may have. This is supposed to be a forum in which the superintendent can learn and grow from, so minority opinion is valuable in this case, if presented the right way. It just does not get reflected in writing because, again, majority opinion is what is important. We do have a template for the annual performance report, and that's easily downloadable off our site. And again, once it comes to the time, if you have issues or questions about that, I'm happy to answer them. Just know that this document is set up so that it ensures that the board considers each of the areas of the initial document. I think we can move forward from this. We've gone over all those things. Couple, just sort of housekeeping notes relative to this process. Each time you meet to talk about the superintendent's performance, you do need to rice him or her. So when you meet on your own to discuss the compilation report, when you meet with him to present him the summary of this data, he should be rice. Also, if you're going to have the pre-evaluation conference and talk about performance, he should also be rice. Do share the evaluation document prior to the conference. Do everything you can to get every board member involved and present at these meetings, and minority opinion can be voiced once again. We'd like to talk about evaluation as not necessarily a once-a-year event, all right? So you guys meet and talk about issues frequently, and some of those things may reflect on performance. It shouldn't be a once-a-year type of thing. It's also incumbent upon board members to remember to review the performance across a full year. So if something just didn't go right in May, you don't want that to drive the tone of the entire evaluation document. Talked about before, developing a system to retain evidence. Talked about progress updates as we go along, especially in relation to goals. And once again, all members should take this responsibility seriously, it's one of the most important ones that you have to guide the performance of the superintendent. And then I can't stress enough, putting a schedule together to make sure that you guys hit all the milestones in this process prior to July 1st so that you can maintain your CUSAC and legal obligations, frankly. We have a number of online resources on our site. Most of these are in PDF, so you can download them and easily review some of the components of them. And you can see up here, this is the actual button to start the process, right? Please, if you have trouble remembering your password to our site, don't wait till the last minute to try and get this settled. As you can imagine, there's 500 some odd districts in the state, so it can be a log jam if you haven't gotten that straight, so do that early if you can. And that's it. Much easier.
Thank you.
From a calendar standpoint...
Yes.
If the goals are year, yearly goals...
Yep.
And our year runs 7-1 to 6-1...
Yep.
How does one get that done by 7-1 if we're judging on the year up to 6-1?
So typically, you're going to see superintendents start this process somewhere in the May, early May timeframe. So essentially, you've got 10 and a half months at that point to demonstrate progress on district goals. And the board, obviously having conversations about these things all year long, is going to understand that, you know, if things don't actually complete till June 30, that at least they're in place and then they're expected and meant to. So that's kind of how we look at the timeframe. Anyone else? Well, thank you all. See you again. Everyone stay right.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Just want to mention that I did receive, while Mr. Lee was making his presentation, a couple of... Hey, good evening, everyone. Just want to mention that I did receive while Mr. Lee was making his presentation, a couple of messages that the video feed, the audio is not coming through clearly for tonight. Our tech staff is looking on that. We do have assurances that when the video does get posted of this meeting, there will be audio for that. However, right now, the audio is going in and out. We're trying to get that resolved while the meeting is on, but we will proceed with the meeting. Again, apologies to anybody who is participating remotely. I'll do it. Okay. We'll move to executive session for the end of the meeting. All right, we're going to go right and do agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you were asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of the public participation will be limited to fifteen minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question. And please have a motion to open this meeting to the public. Mr. Silva, second of I, Mr. Conne. Can I get a motion to close the meeting? Mr. Gao, second of I, Ms. Conne. All right. Superintendent's report, Dr. Dettoro.
Want me to turn the light off, Mike?
Yeah, just one, please.
The student safety data system report is a state mandated report that happens twice a year. Dr. Fitz took part in this presentation last spring, or this previous spring. He provided information on our first reporting cycle. The first reporting period was from September to December. I'm going to be reporting on the second reporting cycle, which goes from January to June. Once, as you can see on the top, you'll see data across all six schools that resemble what incidences took place specific to a couple of different categories. Violence, vandalism, substances, weapons, HIV, other incidences. And we are obligated to report out on HIV, alleged HIV cases. As you can see, the numbers are totaled at the bottom, so you can see there's nine total incidences, two of which are violence, two of which are substance, one weapon, and four HIV that are confirmed, and there's one that's other incidences. On the far right side, you can see that HIV alleged, there were four total cases in the second market period. On the bottom, you'll see the cumulative total. Again, just for the people in the back, just so you can see, reporting out from a district's perspective, total incidences for this entire system, all inclusive, we have nine. One, two of which are violence, two of which are substance, one weapons, four HIV confirmed, one other, and six HIV, alleged HIV accusations. Another piece of this report is to, oh, thanks. No, this is phenomenal. Perfect. Another piece of this report is to share with the community the different trainings that are taking place across the district. These trainings really range, hold on one second, please. The trainings range from training the anti-bullying specialist in the schools. Every school needs to have one. They go to conflict resolution, peer relationships, and cyberbullying, just to name a few. Some of the school programs that we had in place range from basic bus safety and behavior on the bus, character education assemblies, responsive classrooms, spirit week to bring the students together, and week of respect. These take place in all the different schools and all different formats, and as you can see, they range from school to school, and they're age appropriate, specific to the population in which they serve. Again, this is something that we are obligated to report out to the community twice a year. And this is, this data showcases the information for the second period that ranged from January to June 2021. That's it. Okay. Yeah, please.
Still having some.
I'm sure the weather doesn't help. The hurricane probably doesn't help. So a couple of things that are happening. Every meeting, I really wanted to make sure that people are aware of the things that are happening in the district. There are a number of things that we are happy to report about, one of which we had the administrative retreat that took place the week of the 23rd. It was great to get the administrators together, especially having new administrators on the team, create relationships across the team, establish expectations of how we're going to function as a successful leadership group, and build their leadership capacity. Some of the items that we had covered were district and schools' goal setting, how we're going to support our students where they are, and really understanding what learning behaviors are and how they impact learning as a whole. Something that was a fun event and it was great to experience. We want to thank the MSF for the K3 playdates that happened at our three elementary schools. Dr. Fair and I were able to sneak over to each and every one of them and to see the students outside playing. It was so well attended. To see the excitement that they had for coming back, a couple of teachers attended that they were able to check in with them. They were able to meet the principals, and it was a wonderful event all around. There was excitement, and the kids genuinely had a lot of fun. We were able to welcome our staff back today and just to feel the energy in the schools. The staff are excited to welcome your children back. They were getting their rooms ready to make sure that the students walked into a place that's welcoming and warm. And they worked on a lot of great things to prepare themselves to really educate at a high level. So we just want to thank all the administrators that put together the training and the workshops and the learning opportunities and the meetings that took place today and will take place tomorrow to prepare our staff to welcome back all of our students. That being said, we can't wait to welcome back our kids next week on September 9th. Our buildings are going to be prepared and ready. Our teachers are ready, and we're looking forward to a great school year. The last thing I just wanted to talk about, after the past three meetings, I get a chance to go back and really reflect on the meetings that took place. I just want everyone to understand that I completely understand that there's different sides to various topics that we're covering. The concern is not that there's different perspectives. The concern lies in the way we share and respond to those who share different perspectives. The yelling, the interrupting, the name-calling, and the clapping-falling behavior leaves me really disheartened. I want us all to know that we're one community, we're neighbors, and our kids are watching. Let's set the example of how to have a respectful exchange and still allows others to leave hole. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bleecker.
Good evening. Two items to report about this evening. As I mentioned, the last meeting, your audit, annual audit has begun. We had our auditors here doing fieldwork last week. I want to thank the members of the central office team. As I've said in the past, the audit does not just encompass looking at financials. It encompasses looking at board minutes, looking at child study team records, transportation records, payroll records. So it is really an effort by everybody in the business office and in central office. So I want to thank them for their work with the auditors this year. Also, I want to mention, as Dr. Dettoro had said, our buildings are ready to welcome our students. We welcomed our teachers today, and a huge thank you for that goes to our building grounds crew, our custodial crew. Worked tirelessly throughout the summer to get our buildings ready and in best shape for the school year. I want to thank them for all the work and effort they've put in this past summer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Fair?
So two items to report on this evening. The first piece is related to executive order 253 that was just recently communicated by the governor related to the requirement by public school districts, charter schools, parochial schools, and private school employees to be fully vaccinated. Those who remain fully unvaccinated will submit to COVID testing on a minimum of one or two times a week. This executive order goes into effect on October 18th. My office is currently finalizing a memo that will be shared with all of our staff members regarding what the logistics look like. I just want the board to know that this is something that we're on top of. We're prepared, and we've been in touch with our building leadership as well as our school nurses. The second piece, item 18J, I think it's really important to know, and I want to thank the support of the board. We have an instructional paraprofessional. She doesn't like being highlighted, but I think it's important to highlight her. Lisa Lamontaine has been here for 21 years as an instructional paraprofessional. She has worked throughout the district over her time here. And we approached her a year and a half ago, maybe two years ago, about potentially working towards her CDL license, which is to drive a bus van, a school vehicle, for a self-contained program. So she went through all the coursework, she passed all the testing, she's listed on the agenda as a CDL bus driver. She, in this capacity, will assist our self-contained program in getting students out into the community regularly. What's nice is she's in the classroom, so if they need to pick up and get going and do stuff in the community, she is available to do so. So we want to thank Lisa Lamontaine, give her a shout out, and also thank the board for supporting her in these efforts. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, just a few things here. I also would like to thank the Schools Foundation for what they put together. It looked like a great time. Cheers to Jamie Grisby and her group. I know the kids and the parents all love it. I was happy to report that myself, Mr. Silva and Ms. Sacco, were given the full grand tour of every single one of our schools last Wednesday by Mr. Bleecker. We thanked him for his time. It took a little over four hours. We hit every nook and cranny, including every boiler room in every school. And the one in Betsy Ross and GW, they're a little scary because they're like 100 years old. But our schools are in great shape. We saw a lot of new security upgrades that we've done over the past year. We're seeing some of the new things we're working on now, are going to work on in terms of our windows and our facades and air conditioning. And I think we're in a really good space as it comes to our facilities. I've seen other districts, you know, they fight for things that basic is air conditioning and, you know, windows. Our school district looks great, and it's only going to get better over the next, you know, three to five years as we start going through the land report and looking at how we got up. So, and I also got to see Mr. De Silva go down the Betsy Ross slide, which was fun because I thought I'd do that when he was about six. Following up, following along with what Dr. Dettoro said, I do have a bit of a statement to make before we get to the rest of the meeting. I love this town. Mawa is an amazing place to live and raise a family and send your kids to school. Things of late have gotten a little heated, understandably at times, in person and online. Some of the commentary I've seen lately online has been, you know, very angry, both sides of the aisle, talking down to each other and about each other. And I want you all to remember that we are all Mawa residents, along with some people who are joining us tonight from other towns. And we can disagree and still be respectful to one another in our disagreements. In many cases, we don't disagree at all. We just aren't listening to one another or taking a minute to see someone else's point of view based upon their own experiences with themselves or their own children. Mawa is a nonpartisan town in terms of its government. This Board of Education is a nonpartisan board by law. We do not run for our seats or vote on matters as Republicans or Democrats, liberals or conservatives, or in cases as I've been called recently online, Aryan. We are here not to run the district or the schools in the day-to-day via or with our own political opinions on these matters, but to ensure that our district is well-run. And while the definition of well-run may mean different things to different people, in the end, one of the facets of being well-run is to ensure our administration and our school district is following all of the required state mandates handed to us by Trenton, whether we agree with them or not. The legislator and the governor make mandatory changes to our curriculum. Our administrative staff, the supervisors, and our teachers have done an excellent job of working these mandates into our curriculum over the years to ensure it fits into the culture of Mawa. Most of the time, and almost all of the time, without any of the changes being noticed, but still ensuring we are meeting our requirements as a public school district. As it pertains to masks, and we've all heard a lot about masks, and everyone has an opinion about masks, this Board of Education has not voted to make masks mandatory. And these board meetings are not the place to debate the efficacy of masks or the level of protection of COVID or the mortality rate for that pattern. While the district as a whole voted in favor of masks being optional this year, including, I'm sure, members of this very boarding group, myself, masks are required in all school buildings, period, based upon the state mandate put forth by the governor. Other boards held up as examples of attempting to serve up the mandates and quickly backed down. Not only will it present a legal action from his office, but he actually made a new executive order just for one district. So masks, it is, until such time as the mandate is lifted and the decision returns to the local control of the district. As for the public comment portion of our meeting, I am asking each and every one of you to remember that you are sitting next to not only your fellow townspeople, and some from out of town, but your neighbor, but in most cases, next to another parent, and in some instances, and I can speak from experience, your child's friend's parents. You are all sitting before a group of elected board members who have either children in the district now or who had children go through this district and are still proud of this district and want to participate, and who want nothing but the best for all of the children and the employees of this district. So when you come to the microphone tonight, I ask that you direct your comments directly to me as the chair of the meeting. And if an answer can be provided by administration, it will be provided. If more time is needed to get you an answer, our administrative team will reach out to you and give you that answer or direct you to the building personnel specifically to your question to get you an answer. But I'm asking you to be considerate of the person speaking at the microphone. If you disagree with them, show them the respect they deserve by allowing them to speak without commentary or words when they're walking back to the seat. Or if you just disagree with them, come up to the microphone and state your disagreement. It's okay. It's an open public meeting for the Mawa residents and those visiting with us. It is a free country. We have First Amendment rights, but we also should respect one another and respect one another's opinions, especially when we disagree with them. So thank you very much. If that's enough, please get board committee reports. I want Mr. Bleecker first.
Your policy has, there are three abolished policies on tonight's agenda, and four policies and regulations for a first reading, and one policy for a first and second reading. Policies 1648 through 1648.03 pertains to the Restart Recovery Plan and Remote Learning that is now being abolished and is being replaced by policy 1648.11, The Road Forward, which requires school districts to provide full day, full-time, in-person instruction for the 21-22 school year. It is on tonight's agenda for a first and second reading. Policy and regulation 4146, non-renewal of non-tenured support staff, have been revised to incorporate some minor revisions, including clarifying the term days to be calendar days in addition to recodifying the administrative code citation. Policy and regulation 5460.02 is a new and mandated policy that addresses the requirements of the bridge year pilot to provide students in the graduating classes of 2021 and 2022 the opportunity to offset disruptions to learning opportunities and participation in extracurricular activities that might have resulted in the closure of schools in the spring of 2020 due to the COVID. the spring of 2020 due to the COVID pandemic. Policy and Regulation 6471, school district travel has been revised to remove the option that the board may establish an annual maximum amount per employee for regular business travel not requiring prior board approval. And lastly, there's Policy 8561, procurement procedures for school nutrition programs has been revised to remove the federal funds procurement method selection chart that is updated frequently and is now outdated. The revised policy now only incorporates the chart I referenced.
Thank you very much. Mr. Copley?
I got a couple here. Dr. Moore, they asked me to read the report for instruction and curriculum. This past week, in our first meeting for the 21-22 school year, the primary focus of this meeting was to review curriculum updates and various courses of study. Our teachers and supervisors were hard at work, as they always are each summer, writing curriculum and making necessary updates. Supervisor Nikki Van Ness, Maureen Lynch, and our previous K-25 supervisor and current GW principal, Jennifer Blubaki, provided reports during our meetings. The specific list of updated courses is listed under New Business Item H, and in new novel, Other Words From Home, which is going to be taught in the sixth grade, is under New Business Item I. Both we voted on tonight. This part I'm excited about. We also discussed the launch of the Thunderbird Partnership Program. It's an initiative that aligns well with our strategic plan that focuses on developing relationships with experts in our school and larger Mawa community to enhance academic curriculum with focus on real-world experiences. There are multiple ways for experts, which are not just parents, it's anyone in the community, family members, business leaders, whomever. There's many ways for experts to partner with us. They can come into the classroom and speak with the classes, they can create opportunities and jobs and actions for students to shadow or have externships in particular areas of interest. They can help students find their passion through career exposure in middle school. A letter to the school community will be coming out in the next few weeks. Please sign up if you have an expertise in some kind of whatever industry. Please sign up, please get involved. The more people that we get involved in the school community, the more successful this program will be. Lastly, Instruction and Curriculum Committee wants to wish all students, teachers, support staff, administrators, school nurses, office staff, bus drivers, and custodial staff a smooth and safe return to school. Although we've had to make a few adjustments, we know that there's an excitement in the air as we return to full-day instruction and look forward to seeing students in their as-normals-can-be school routines. We thank our administration team for their diligent work and guidance in providing the road back for Mawa, and we know that children of this district remain their overarching priority. That was INC. I'm going to jump into community relations. This is our community corner for tonight. Labor Day is this Monday. Little factoid from Mike. It's an annual celebration of the social and economic achievements of American workers. The holiday is rooted in the late 19th century, when labor activists pushed for a federal holiday to recognize the many contributions workers have made to America's strength, prosperity, and well-being. In the wake of massive labor unrest in 1894, in an attempt to repair ties with American workers, Congress passed an act making Labor Day a legal holiday in Washington, DC and the territories. On June 28th, 1894, President Grover Cleveland cited the law. The Jewish High Holidays are coming up over the next two weeks. Happy New Year to those that will be celebrating and have an easy and reflective fast to those that will be fasting in Yom Kippur. September 10th is the Hindu festival of, I'm going to try this, Gunash Chutrati, celebrating the birthday of the elephant god who removes obstacles and hardships and is considered to be a symbol of wisdom, writing, travel, commerce, and good fortune. On September 14th, our Parent Academy and the Mawa Municipal Alliance is hosting a virtual presentation on vaping at 7:00 PM. Info can be found on their website. Back-to-school nights are scheduled a little bit earlier this year, so please check your school's website for the exact date and time. Also, this year marks the 20th anniversary of the 9/11 attacks. Please take a minute or two on the 11th to remember all the ones that we lost that day and in the days, months, years that followed. Mawa will be hosting our annual remembrance ceremony on September 11th at 11:00 AM at the Lisa De Giulio Tranquility Park across from Winter's Pond, a place we never forget. And last but not least, MSF. The MSF wanted to thank everyone who participated in the K-3 play dates this past week. It was a very successful event. Hopefully we continue it throughout next year. They also have another play date for kindergarten students on September 10th at Continental. For more information, you can find information on their social media platforms as well as their websites. That's all I have. That's all? That's it. I'm done for the others.
Any other board member remarks? Additional comments? Ms. Cope?
First of all, I would like to echo what you said then about the facilities tour. I'd like to thank the Finance and Facilities Committee for inviting me to participate. It's the first time I participated in the tour, and I have to say that I was very impressed at how well our buildings are maintained. I would like to thank Greg Romero, our supervisor of Building and Grounds, for his oversight in this area. I'd also like to thank Pritchard Industries for their custodial services. This week on the news, I think it was just yesterday, a school district had to delay their opening because of mold on student desks. When I walked around and participated in the tour, our buildings were very clean, spotless. I thought Dr. Fitz maybe was exaggerating, but they really are spotless. And I'd like to thank again Pritchard Industries for that and acknowledge their hard work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other board member remarks? Okay, here we go. Number 16, Old Business Minutes. Can I please get a motion to approve the minutes of the August 18th, 2021 Public Work Session Action Meeting? Mr. Gallo, second by Ms. Conoco. Dr. Park?
Yes.
Ms. Sacco?
Yes.
Mr. Copley?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
And Mr. Kizmarsky?
Yes.
All right, number 17, New Business. Can I get a motion to approve resolutions A through N? Ms. Conoco, second by Ms. Sacco. Dr. Park?
Yes.
Ms. Sacco?
Yes.
Mr. Copley?
Yes and all, but I have stand on check number 103863.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes, and I just want to highlight I, again on curriculum, I want to thank all the staff members who worked so diligently over the summer to get this amount of work completed. Thank you.
Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
And Mr. Kizmarsky?
Yes.
Number 18, New Business Personnel. Can I get a motion to approve resolutions A through Q? Mr. Denise, seconded by Mr. De Silva? Dr. Park?
Yes.
Ms. Sacco?
Yes.
Mr. Copley?
Yes, and I want to congratulate Jason Calhoun as being appointed as our new head softball coach.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes, and I want to also recognize Ms. Lamontaine for stepping up. I know that's going to make a big difference in that program.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
And Mr. Kizmarsky?
Yes.
Number 19, Public Questions or Comment. Public participation at board meetings is in accordance with bylaw 0167. At this time, members of the public may ask questions or make comments on educational issues or sweet matters of community interest. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of our public participation will be limited to you. And please have a motion to open the meeting to the public. Mr. De Silva, seconded by Ms. Conoco. We are open to the public at 7:29.
I guess it's me going first. Phil Ross, One Man a Road. First of all, guys, I want to commend you and thank you for your comments in the beginning regarding, you know, that we are one community here in Mawa. And, you know, I'm not here to bash, I don't want to be bashed, and you see, see part of my, part of what I was going to say, because I'm going to operate on the auspice that everyone will abide by what you gentlemen brought forth before, about keeping things clean, we don't need to be slinging mud onto each other. You know, I don't want to be put in a position to have to defend myself and my name when lies are being said directly about me, and my name is being used. I will not tolerate that, but I will leave this alone, and then, and hopefully that this won't happen anymore, and I want to thank you for that. You know, I want to make something clear. I'm not anti-mask, but I'm pro-choice, pro-choice for the students and the parents of the students. And, you know, I look to solutions. And let me just, let me just hand this out. So, everybody talks about, you know, the microns and so forth, and, you know, it's kind of hard for everyone to put it in their head, so I made a little handout here demonstrating why I prefer this. You know, and in some of my recent communications, I proposed another viable choice option. I've used a face shield on the BCC campus. I was there today, it was very well accepted, it was received very well by staff, by students, by administrators, and even though, you know, I brought up to the Vice President of Student Affairs, and he said it's a great option and that people are already using it, especially those with hearing and visually impaired, this works great. And, you know, especially for kids, they get to see each other's faces, they get to see expressions, and in addition to that, you don't have to constantly be breathing in your carbon dioxide, and it's a lot more effective. Because if you look at this, when I exhale, anything that comes out drops down. If you put your hand in front of your face and you blow on it, if you feel air coming out, guess what? Those microns are getting forced right through. So not only is this a better option visually for the children and for the staff, but it's also a healthier option. Again, I'm looking toward solutions. I'm not just going to sit there and, you know, say, no, this is no good, that's not good. Give me viable solutions, everyone. And I think that this would be another viable choice. Thank you.
Just to follow up on the presentation there, Mr. Ross, thank you for the email that you sent specific to that. Since that time, we were able to try to look back into the use of masks or the use of shields. The New Jersey Department of Health released new guidance today. When you look at the guidance, the way that it reads, it does not acknowledge shields as a proper masking measure. What they spoke about was making sure it's affixed right to your face, and I believe that the gap within the mask and your face doesn't align with what the NJDOH has said. So we heard from the email and we wanted to look into it to give it its just due, and the NJDOH came out and they have other expectations specific to masking. Thank you so much.
Good evening. David Warshaw, 167 Van Winkle Lane, here in Mawa. I've not attended board meetings before Board of Ed, but I have viewed what has been done and viewed something. So I just have a couple of comments. First of all, in this, I rise in support of the Board of Education's implementation of state mandated curriculum honoring diversity and inclusion. We live in complex times, as noted in 2020 census data recently released. The United States is more diverse and more multiracial than ever. Those designating themselves as belonging to more than one racial group, and that's the multiracial cohort, increased by 276% from the prior census. Data for individual races, Black, Hispanic, Asians, all showed increases. The population choosing white alone, while still the largest cohort, declined by 8.6% since 2010. Our children are growing up in an increasingly racially mixed environment. Our education system needs now more than ever to both celebrate the achievements and contributions of people of all colors, ethnicities, religions, and orientations, and must also offer the truth the best, past bad practices, both those codified under law and actions taken by those who we might rightfully term as racist. It's not indoctrination, it's teaching the values of what America has stood for since the founding. So I compliment and agree with the curriculum. I also want to rise in favor of Board of Education's recognition of state mandates on masks in our public school staff and students, and also, as I heard, the implementation
That's not your time.
I know. Implementation of mandates for staff vaccinations.
Everybody get ready to use your phone.
Right. If the flood comes this way. COVID is real, the Delta variant is frighteningly real. In a recent instance, a single unmasked elementary school teacher in Marin County is reported to have caused COVID infection in 27 students. Children can be asymptomatic, perhaps transmission rates are less for the younger cohort, and perhaps the disease is less severe in the younger cohort. But if this were a betting game and you wanted to win, I think we'd all agree we'd want to bring the odds more to our favor. Obviously, vaccination gives the greatest protection. Vaccination must be at the core of what we do. Smallpox, measles, diphtheria, whooping cough, polio are rare, and in some cases have been eradicated by vaccines. We can and must follow that well-worn scientific path of COVID. The next layer is to minimize exposure for those who may not have been vaccinated or are too young to be vaccinated or may have a breakthrough case. And the next most effective layer is to mask to prevent the intake of the virus and release of virus-laden particles in the air. I believe this is no more an affront to freedom than rules on children's car seats, or keeping peanuts out of schools, or prohibitions on smoking in public places. We are all a brother's keeper in a free society. We have responsibilities beyond ourselves and our immediate family. So I compliment the board and I look forward to a safe and complete in-person school year coming. Thank you very much.
Terry Cavacas, 150, Dareful Terrace. My question is about 17, I in the curriculum revision about climate change. Is there both sides being presented? Because this is a very political issue.
Can you share with me the both sides of climate change?
Well, it's the people that believe in quote-unquote "climate change," and then there's the other group of scientists who say the Earth has been going through changes forever. The mini-Ice Age thing since 1700. It hasn't been getting as hot as everything was predicted, and it's just, there are two very different sides to this. And a lot of it is political because one group wants to green energy. So I'm just curious, is there both sides being presented, or is this just teaching our kids climate change, which is necessarily true?
Along the lines of the standards set forth in science, what I can share with you, they talk a lot about human impact, the importance of recycling, the emissions of different gases. But the specificity of what you're referring to, what I would suggest that you do, or, you know, we can help you get to that space, is on the NJDOE website, underneath the Science Standards, it provides great detail, very granular detail, on the extent in which each grade level or grade level band is going to go with a specific topic. And that can really give you some clarity on the scope of that work.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Hi, Danielle Ryan, Finto River View Terrace. I went over the notes, or the email rather, that came through on the travel restrictions. Could you explain to me? Could you explain to me the reasoning behind basically not allowing any of the younger students be able to travel outside the state? They're allowed to travel to states that touch New Jersey, so they can go to Hershey Park in Pennsylvania, a quote "high-risk" area, but they can't drive to Grandma's House in Vermont, because they left the state, and that state doesn't touch New Jersey.
Because it's listed under the CDC guidance.
It's a recommendation, yeah.
Yes, and as per the NJ Department of Health rules that were just listed, were just posted today, today's September first. Yes, the New Jersey Department of Health just posted their rules today, and they stated to follow the CDC recommendations.
And so what would happen to the students that have to stay home for two weeks to quarantine? Will there be like a virtual option for them?
They will be able to zoom into their classes.
Okay, so to go away for a couple of days, you're going to miss a half a month of school.
Yes.
That sort of, that makes no sense.
Okay.
Can we admit that that makes no sense?
We're following, we're following that.
I understand COVID exists everywhere, it doesn't exist in, it doesn't not exist in states that touch New Jersey. So those guidelines makes absolutely no sense.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Dr. Fair, can we just clarify the quarantine timeframes? I don't think, is it two weeks if you don't get tested, Greg? But if a child can get tested within seven days, they can...
So, so there's a lot of different pieces to it. So I would strongly recommend whoever has questions about that whole table, the last thing I want to do is give the wrong if-this-then-that. So the best thing to do is to go back into that, where you can find it if by chance it's lost in the emails, because I know there's a, a number of communications out there. On our website, underneath the Communications tab, there's the specificity of depending on going from adults that are vaccinated to unvaccinated to students that, you know, because we have students that, that are vaccinated to unvaccinated, and then the scope of if you're a close contact, if you're a positive case, we tried to get as much detail as possible to showcase, to share the amount of time that you would have to be impacted from it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Oh, this is a little intimidating. My name is Rebecca Lettenfeld-Possen, two zero two two, Beatrice Court. My family have been residents in Mala for the past eleven years, and this is the first Board of Ed meeting I have physically attended, though I've been watching at home for almost the last full year. Our oldest child has been in the Mala Public School since his enrollment in the pre-K program, and will be entering fifth grade at JK this fall, and our younger son attends preschool elsewhere but can't wait to join his brother next year on Cape Cod. Before I begin my statement, I also want to provide my professional background. I'm a certified pediatric nurse who has worked with critically ill children in ICU and emergency room settings for the past eighteen years. I also specialize in pediatric cardiology, now seven masters in public administration for nursing leadership. I was deployed clinically throughout New York City during the spring of twenty twenty and volunteered to work in COVID units locally during our second surge this past winter. On a daily basis, I am part of a quality team that reports New York state-level COVID data every day since March of twenty twenty. I find myself every day looking at data and medical charts of people with COVID, and then I work shifts at the hospital in urgent care where I am seeing it come to life. I came tonight with studies, peer-reviewed from the Journal of the American Medical Association, the American Association of Pediatrics, the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, and the Morbidity and Mortality Weekly Report, and all of them state that wearing multi-layer masks are effective at blocking fifty to seventy percent of exhaled small droplets and particles, because that is what we are talking about. Not that the COVID virus is the size of a micron, but that it is encapsulated in respiratory droplets that masks help to block. But since there are so many that don't believe in the research and science that clearly supports this, I will tell you about my experience since, since COVID surfaced. The past year and a half, I have seen the worst parts of my profession. Refrigerated trucks outside my hospital because our morgue can't reach capacity, tent hospitals built to accommodate the amount of sick patients, operating rooms, cafeterias, any place possible within the hospital converted to patient care areas, physicians scrambling to treat patients while safely protecting themselves, families saying goodbye at our ER desk to their loved ones because they weren't sure when they were going to see them again. To most people in this room, these are images on the news or articles in your feed on social media. To me, I have lived this for the past eighteen months. I had a local parent ask me once how our family had not gotten COVID since my high, given my high level of exposure, and my response was swift. I am impeccable at my PPE and masking. Since my initial exposures in March of twenty twenty, I masked the second I entered the hospital until the second I leave. When I take breaks, I have space for my coworkers. I am careful that nothing that comes into contact at the hospital comes into contact with my family. It is exhausting. I understand everyone's fatigue with living in a pandemic, but I also believe that this diligence is what has kept my family safe. Study after study shows the efficacy of masking in school settings. In a seminar provided by a local holistic pediatrician this week with the Whole Child Center, he stated that all of the data from the last year supports that there are no adverse effects for children wearing masks in school settings, and he was quick to add that the real risk lies within the potential for our children to get sick, given how transmissible the Delta variant is. And look at what is happening at schools all over our country that are in sessions without masks. Outbreaks of cases, backtracking and requiring masks, school closures, defying their state government ruling against masking and mandating their districts to wear masks, additionally more pediatric cases, hospitals surging, lack of that availability. Mandating masks be worn in school is a large part of a multi-layered approach to having our children in school full-time this fall, and isn't that what we all want? For our children to be in school in person full day. I know I do. This multi-layered approach has been shown and studied to be effective in protecting children in schools, camps, and other settings. And contrary to what many people have stated, children get sick with COVID, children suffer from long COVID syndrome, and children die. I'm seeing it every shift I am working at my hospital. Four percent of the COVID cases in children occurred just in the last week of August nineteenth, a hundred and eighty thousand cases. I listened to a community member a few weeks, a few weeks ago, report statistics of children with COVID, and yes, today only four hundred children have died from COVID, and yes, that accounts for a very small percentage. And again, to many people, these numbers are, these are numbers on a piece of paper, and they serve as evidence that children should not test because their risk is low. For me, I see the faces of every single one of those families, as I have many times in my career comforting parents as they watch their children die. I think to myself, if any of those families could have even tried to prevent this and put multi-layered mitigating strategies in place, masking, social distancing, outdoors when possible, I am positive those parents would have jumped at the chance to protect their children. But I think also, what if this happened here in our community? What if one of our children, or any of our children, was, to God forbid, die from a disease that we could have helped prevent by following our mask mandate and keeping our community safe? We are not immune from this. We, the adults, it's our job to protect them. So I wanted to come in and state to you, Dr. DeChuro, Dr. Fair, the rest of the Board of Ed, that I thank you for thinking of the greater good, for not being swayed by people and pressure, and for protecting our children when difficult decisions needed to be made, and following the science that so clearly proves that. That is your job, and you are doing it well for my happiness.
Thank you. Anyone else next? All right, seeing none. We got a motion to vote? Mr. Gallo, seconded by Ms. Conoco. At this time, we will be going into executive session, that's correct. There's nothing that we're not...
No action afterwards.
We'll have no action afterwards, so I ask that you all get home very safely. When we come out of executive close session, we're simply going to close the meeting. Thank you very much for coming. Motion to go to executive close session. Mr. De Silva's...
Hi.